Go ahead and begin our budget session today.
Certainly.
And we will begin with Chief Duncan and Police Department.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief.
We are presenting today our annual budget, which is approximately eleven million, three hundred thousand dollars for this upcoming fiscal year. For our goals, our program goals, we're having some success with the program goals that we've had established over the past couple of years to include another implementation of Safe Streets, continued use of ComStat, working joint operations with our Safe Street partners in and around the city, focusing on quality of life improvement and other community programs that we're running, which include High Point and our reentry project as well. With this, with these stated goals in mind and with this budget that we're allotted, as you know, that money is earmarked for three separate budgeting platforms: the Police Department, our sitcom or our radio room, and then our animal control. This year, for our clerical staff, we are funded at five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. This also includes the positions for Safe Streets Coordinator and our Safe Streets Crime Analyst. Our non-clerical salary line, which is our sworn complement, we're budgeted for five million, three hundred and seventy thousand. We have one part-time position that is assigned to assist in the quartermaster slot for the year. We've had some increases and decreases in the various accounts, and vast majority of them have remained level. Our uniform allowance, our uniform maintenance pricing has gone up to accommodate the additional personnel. Last year, we were at forty-four, four, and this year, we're at forty-eight thousand, ten dollars to accommodate the extra personnel. We've built in some step increases for our civilians. As you know, when we did the salary restructure, we left out the vast majority of civilians that are employed in our agency. I am excluding in this group the dispatcher component because that was taken care of during the salary readjustment and then in Evergreen as well. So this year, we have budgeted fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars for step increases for our civilians. Our overtime for sworn members, we are coming in with two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for this year. Our workers' comp rate went up slightly. I'm sorry, our workers' comp rate went up significantly, rather, to include civilians and sworn. We had, this past year, we were at three hundred and twenty-six thousand, this year, we're at five hundred and eighteen. Some of that is the increase in manpower and some of that is just the increase in cost. Leops also went up slightly. This past year, we were at one million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. This year, we're at one million, six hundred and forty-one thousand. Again, that's impacted by both increase in manpower and the increase in the Leops funding process. Significant increase this year in our accreditation line. Last year, we were budgeted for four thousand, five hundred dollars, and this was our membership fee, which we are required to pay. This year, we need to increase it to nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. One of the requirements during your tenure between reaccreditation processes, which happens every three years, your agency is required to attend one of two annual training conferences. This year, they are offering a conference in Colorado Springs or Reno, Nevada. We chose Colorado Springs, and that's why you see the increase in that budget line. Our testing line has also increased. This is for costs associated with current employment, promotional testing, pre-employment background investigations. We saw an increase with our psychological testing vendor, an increase by fifty dollars per test. And then our background investigation, which is required for us to conduct credit checks, that has also increased, which is why you see the increase from four thousand, nine hundred to five thousand, five hundred. Our alarm system out at the firearms range is increasing significantly. Past years, we were budgeted for six hundred and fifty dollars. This year, we're looking at approximately three thousand dollars. This is to change over from Richard Reed Security, which is not a local company, updating all of the equipment, which is essentially original install out there, for updating for current requirements out there at the range. And then we're switching to a local alarm company here in the city, alarm engineering. Our maintenance and repairs, that's remaining at twenty-seven thousand. Equipment contracts, we're budgeted this year for fifty-seven thousand, six hundred. That's an increase up over last year. Additionally, during this budget year, we're going to see PredPol come in for half the year because we were able to pay for that computer database crime analytics processing package through current year surplus. So you will see a little jump there because they don't charge until the beginning of the year. Our vehicle maintenance, we have slated for seventy-six thousand. Office supplies, we were able to cut a little bit more there, twenty-seven thousand. Janitorial supplies remains the same. Ammunition, last year, we were adopted for twenty-five, and again, this year, we're staying at twenty-five thousand. Protective vests, it's eleven thousand dollars this year. We do get the bulletproof vest partnership grants, which covers half of the cost, so this represents our share of our vest requirement, you see there. Our copiers remain the same. Insurance liability has dropped just a little bit, by five thousand dollars. Our training budget is at forty-four thousand this year. Last year, we were approved for forty-six thousand. And gasoline, we're projecting at approximately two hundred and fifty thousand for this coming fiscal year under the guidelines set forth by finance on that. Publications, it's essentially remained the same, dues are the same. Those are for professional dues and groups that we belong to. Everything from the FBI National Academy, all the way through evidence property groups, professional organizations that we are a member of within the agency. Vehicles, this year, we're budgeted for two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the purpose of purchasing five patrol vehicles and outfitting them completely. Now on to sitcom. Last year, we came in with four hundred and eighty-one thousand. This year, we're expecting a little bit of an increase there. Do you have that in front of you? Sitcom?
Mm-hmm.
Is that five twenty-five?
Yes.
Confirmed, so five hundred and twenty-five thousand for our dispatcher room. Their uniforms are not changing as far as price goes. Their night differential is approximately the same. And then overtime, last year, we were fairly consistent, thirty-five thousand. This year, we're asking for the same. Overtime projects where we would have additional dispatchers include any street operations or joint operations where we need to establish a third seat separate from ordinary business that we would conduct. This also goes to filling leave time, so we have two personnel available to process and handle the calls. Our annual maintenance contracts and upgrade portions for this equipment in the radio room, we're budgeted for forty-eight thousand this year. Animal control, we are finally back up to two individuals in that position, and we have a total budget of sixty-eight thousand. Uniform allowance remains the same for these two members of the animal control unit. And we had two trucks that we use for animal control, which are in fairly decent shape. One of them is, needs an engine replacement, but the body, the chassis, all the equipment, everything associated with it is just fine, so we're just, we're working on installing a new engine in that vehicle now and putting that vehicle back out on the road shortly.
Getting one brand-new or a used?
No, we're going to use the one we have because it's structurally sound. We just, we need a new engine.
No, I meant the engine is going to be brand-new or is it going to be a used engine?
Uh, that I'd have to check. I don't know off the top. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Five-one other attorney is sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Correct.
What's the other attorney for?
That is for a, an attorney. Her name is Karen Kruger. She is a law enforcement, specific legal specialist. So when we have disciplinary issues, major points of contention, lawsuits, things like that, she is specific as to law enforcement officer rights, protocols when it comes to disciplinary actions. And we've used her actually extensively.
Is this the first time you've been?
In this department, yes.
Okay.
But she's well-known throughout the.
We're talking about other attorney.
Well, I think before they were coding it under professional services.
Right, but this is the first time that we've separated that.
And now, now it's in the other attorney line, that's why you're seeing that new. But there's still a comment, and this is probably left over under professional services, that the account has increased due to contract for private legal counsel.
Right.
Okay, so that one's left over and... It's hard where they're mingled. Has everything been, that was legal in the professional services line been moved to the other attorney line now?
Keith?
As far as I know, that's, that was the objective, the date add.
That's my understanding, yeah.
So the ninety-five hundred that's in the professional services line is for other things. But here, we have sixteen thousand, year-to-date, in the other attorney, but we're budgeting sixty-eight hundred. I can't tell prior years what it was, I can't see, you know, history. Is that, was this a big anomaly year with that, or is that a normal amount, sixteen thousand?
Give me the budget line number now.
Five thirteen, three oh two, the other attorney. It's on page thirty, uh, twenty-two. We don't have any actual for 2014 because it was in the other account. I can't separate out what was legal there.
Well, I can tell you that this is the first time that we've contracted with this specialized attorney. Prior to this, this current year that we're in right now, we had not. And we had various disciplinary proceedings, some of which extended into this current fiscal year that we're in right now, that we needed some guidance on.
I'm just wondering if sixty-eight hundred is enough in the drop from, we're already at sixteen.
Well, sixty-eight hundred, actually, her contract price is seven thousand, five hundred, not six thousand, eight hundred. That's her price for animal.
Okay, so that needs to at least be seventy-five hundred, correct?
Keith, do you have, are you seeing an adjustment at the mayor's level by any chance?
From seventy-five to sixty-eight.
What's the account?
It's five one three, three zero two, other attorney. No history for fourteen and fifteen. That was, we created that line specifically for this purpose, but I didn't know if the mayor adjusted it down from seventy-five to sixty-eight.
No, you could see if that was the case, you would, I'm pretty sure the mayor did.
I don't recall making any adjustments there. I don't know why it would be in at sixty-eight, but, so you're saying we need an adjustment to seventy-five?
I'll double-check that.
Okay, can you do that? Please.
I have no problem with budgeting for this one.
No, no, that's fine, I was just trying to figure out. We talked about other attorney the other day, and this is the first time I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's interesting that we, you know, having other attorney applied in different areas, but, you know, I'd rather see it a portion appropriately to the department where it belongs, where it's going to be used, if it's an attorney for special purposes, than just lumped together.
No, that wasn't like, no.
I understand, just wanted to make sure there wasn't opposition.
Well, we, we had also found some, just in going through our own manual with respect to discipline, we had found some issues that needed to be corrected. And so in order to remain consistent with Maryland law and have that extend nicely into law enforcement officer bill of rights, we felt it was best to be at a strong hand guiding us to make sure that we're complying. Everything from how complaints are received, all the way up to the termination process and everything in between.
So you said her contract price is seventy-five hundred?
That's correct.
Is that like the retainer fee, and then the more we use, of course, we're going to pay more?
Yeah, if you have items beyond that, so this is for, this is for just general questions, and she can work up until that, that price, and then anything beyond her billable hours, she would charge independently. So if we had a trial board that extended, you know, for long periods of time, there were negotiations between the two attorneys, and it exceeded that number, then we'd have to transfer money into that line.
That's where I'm trying to figure out what that annual number should be.
Yeah.
Because, well, for this particular, you're talking about this newly established line is thirteen, three oh two. So the base contract fee is fifty-seven hundred. We've been, we've been pretty critical to not go above that, unfortunately, this past year because the mayor had also asked that an audit be conducted. We had to go above that seventy-five hundred to pay for the audit as well. But we've gotten through most of the difficult issues, and we're up to speed as far as our processes go. So I would say let this be a clean year, and we'll be mindful of that figure.
As long as we all understand that that may require a budget amendment if something comes up that we needed extra money.
The way that I would approach that is, that's an extraordinary circumstance that I can deal with on that. If it's something that's routine and should have been in the budget, then I have an issue with it, but I don't have an issue with it that way.
So we increase it to seventy-five hundred, correct?
Yes.
You capture that?
Sixty-eight to seventy-five. I have several other questions if anyone else wants to go first, or if you want me to?
I've got an easy one.
Okay.
Chief, on the, on the workers' comp, I understand the component of it, that it is because of more employees. Do you by any chance know what the difference in incident rate was between the previous year and this year, which causes rate increases? Do we have that information, Keith, or?
The rate increase for what, what line?
The rate increases, on the, on the workers' comp, you have two components. The one component is the, the cost per employee.
Right.
And the other one is an increase based on the incident rate year-over-year.
Right. At the present time, we, we get a, a rate that we can quote with until we get an experience factor that will be provided in early May. So like in the first week of May, we'll, typically, we reduce to the final quoted rate. And in the, in this adjustment list, you can see last year, that amounted to be about four hundred thousand dollars. So right in the early May, we'll get clearance to reduce, and that will get spread among all of the departments, getting it back to likely exactly rate-wise where it was last year. But the quoted amount was the same as it was last year that we quoted with. So no, we don't expect an increase.
So the, and the rates then are therefore, are all employees?
So far, it's holding. We believe it's holding, yes, at this time. But early May, we'll get, we'll get the real results, first week in May.
It's a nice little windfall, just when you think you've got it all.
Except we've already plugged it in.
Well, I know. In the past two years, it's been like, oh!
Well, also, I mean.
But that's just when it fixed you up.
It can go the other way, too, I know, I know. At least we're aware of this. So they're overstated right now because they're based on the stated rate, but we expect.
Fall back, yeah.
I was more trying to gear it towards the safety performance of the department because obviously, the likelihood of an incident or occurrence in the chief's department or in either chief's department is probably higher than would be in the employees that are in the building.
I think it's safe to say overall, this is because of the, the safety performance of the city overall, that we've been able to experience some very significant credits.
That's good.
And you did ask earlier in the week for the frequency rates, and Julia pulled them, and I provided them by way of email just a few minutes ago.
Great.
The rates are down from eighteen to thirteen second quarter of the year compared to the third quarter, so we're down somewhat.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Tim, you had a question?
A couple, actually. Do we have any training that goes on that can generate any revenue? I know we send a lot of people other places. Do we have anything going on that people come to?
There are two types of training which we conduct. One of them is for the Maryland Information Database System, so officers out on the street can run license plates and warrants and warrants and things like that. The individuals that operate that platform are trained at SPD, and we have the certified instructors to offer that course, although it's not a revenue-generating course. The other course that we also instruct is for our tactical teams in the region. Again, it's not a revenue-generating structure, though.
Okay. Do we see any opportunities for?
We, from time to time, we get an opportunity to host training, be a host site for training, and at that point in time, we may get a slot in that class. But as far as offering training en masse, we don't have the instructor pool. All of the agencies in the area kind of give their instructors to the academy so that large-scale training can be done that way, so we all kind of participate with that.
So it's coordinated from elsewhere?
Through the, through the academy, that's correct.
Can you go to the alarm system? I'm not sure how this works. This is twenty-one, zero, twenty-one. On page twenty-two.
What's the next of the numbers?
Sorry?
What's the next of the numbers?
Oh, five, two, three, six, zero, seven. On page twenty-two. What do we have as the cost of the replacement system? I see that there's a...
Well, the new system monitoring, new system installation monitoring would be approximately two hundred and forty-five dollars per month, and then the installation fee for the, for the different upgrades and pieces is eight hundred and eighty-five dollars there.
Yeah, that's a pretty big increase in the monitoring.
Again, that's an old system you're dealing with out there.
And lastly, the revenue generated from the new speed camera at Riverside Drive, we have numbers on that.
I had checked that approximately a month and a half ago, and very, very little. Very little. In fact, back in the end of February, beginning of March, they hadn't received a violation, to my recollection. I thought was odd.
Sort of expected that because of the traffic patterns there, you know, the slowdowns to the light and whatnot.
Well, is that in that thirty-day window where they have to tab it up without charging? Or was that part of it?
No, that was exclusively.
Does that indicate, would that be an argument for moving it?
Eventually, yeah, but remember, it just got installed, so.
Right.
But that's what we'll do, you know, they, we move them around depending on where we're seeing violations occur after, after they come in and do the survey of the area.
Okay.
They'll have to move.
There'll be no change? I'm sorry, there'll be no change in, in operations during the summer months as opposed to?
That's correct. Right, the Board of Ed had requested when we had the program first installed that we continue operations because of the activities that are run on the Board of Ed properties throughout the city throughout the summer.
Does that deal with St. Francis as well?
St. Francis did not specifically, God does ask us. But I do know that, you know, they're hosting a lot of different things over there.
Center stuff going on there all the time?
Camp Odyssey came in last year, and I don't know if they're coming back this year, but it's programs of that nature that typically run there.
I wonder if you see a spike in the summer because people assume that they don't.
That's what I was thinking just for a moment.
They're not running.
Yippee.
Interesting to see.
I can check that out if you like.
Yes, just an interesting tidbit. Some of my questions have been answered, so I'm all the way up to page twenty-three, that's good.
What the, in the detail, what line?
The first one is the buildings, five thirty-four, three oh one. There's quite a swing there. Is there something that we did this year that we don't anticipate? Or this explains that big drop? Right now, the actual is at ninety thousand, but we're budgeting twenty-seven, seven for next year.
Right. Yeah, we had a very difficult year infrastructure-wise. All of our HVAC units have been replaced. We had some significant issues with our heating unit. It froze once again this year, so that had to be replaced as well. Uh, so that had to be replaced as well. And, um, we thought that we had mitigated a water problem in our records office. However, what we have found is that when the building was constructed, um, it was not waterproofed correctly. So, um, right now, we're going to, we're looking at the required excavation around the foundation. Uh, if you're standing in front of the building and you look at the, uh, right corner of the building, that's where our records unit is located, and that's where the water infiltration is happening. So we, uh, working, we're working on getting quotes for those repairs and have it waterproofed correctly. If they find, and I suspect that they will find it, that a lack of waterproofing, um, continued around the entire building, at some point, we're gonna have to look into doing the entire thing. But right now, we're just gonna get in there, take a look. They, uh, believe that, um, it was just a, like a, a sheet, uh, placed over the foundation itself instead of a, a water seal, uh, which is what has caused the leak in this one area. So we've, internally and externally, we've had some substantial kind of end-of-life, um, issues related to the infrastructure itself.
Who is the vendor for that building? Anybody remind, remember who built it?
It was constructed, construction was finished in ninety-six on the building. I don't, I'd have to go pull that.
Makes me wonder, are we still doing business with that entity, you know?
So the, the twenty-fourteen number was thirty-six, five.
Mm-hmm.
That looks like kind of the routine sort of things. And then we've got twenty-seven, seven for this year, but that doesn't, so that seems like the everyday kind of things, not including the waterproofing. You're saying, we don't have a quote yet to put in there for that.
We have an estimate of approximately seventeen thousand, uh, but we're not, we, we think that, um, that's just for the excavation piece and the, um, and the, and the ceiling. And then we're going to have to look at the, uh, the interior repairs of the, uh, the cinder block as a, as a separate quote, which we're working on getting now. So we don't have a total quote. But we are working with, uh, with Jen to get that other piece in place.
But bottom line, the twenty-seven, seven's probably not gonna cut it.
Correct.
Good timing, Colonel.
Yeah.
He walks right in and says, no.
This is typically a line that we have to transfer funding into. Although, um, having replaced every standalone HVAC unit in the building, at least that won't have to be done for a while.
Because we have warranties on all of them, hopefully.
Yes.
Okay. Still a question mark there, but.
Is there something else I can?
Well, no, I mean, just whether.
I mean, we're gladly, we'll take a new building.
Well, I mean, I know that, I, you're saying you, you usually have to transfer money in there, but.
Correct.
Looking through this, I'm not seeing where you're gonna have a lot of room to transfer from. So that's my concern. Do we have enough bu- enough money in there to begin with? Because I don't like saying, we have a balanced budget, here we go, and knowing that in two months or a month, we're gonna end up doing budget amendments because we didn't put stuff in there.
Mm-hmm. Interesting.
And that, that's my concern with that one and a few others, but. The next one I had a lot, a question on was the very next line for equipment. There's a comment at the bottom that says, we're increasing this account due to a new contract, Predpol.
Predpol, correct.
But the budget actually went down in that.
I'm showing a slight increase in that, actually, and then, uh.
Original, yeah.
But the revised fund is at seventy-five, and that was to include the Predpol. I believe that was a budget amendment we did. Correct? For the Predpol?
Actually, we, we. We had revised up to sixty-seven. Not seventy-five, but, um, that's what, and, and we should be at fifty-seven, six ninety-one right now.
What's the date on your report?
At the left corner.
Or maybe.
One right one, I'm showing four fifteen.
They're all the same.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember right, there were a few accounts that were transferred over to IT.
No, she, she's looking for the number on this report. I don't have the date for you.
So I think initially.
The same number that we're showing, the four fifteen.
I think initially, the account had dropped. And then, um, due to some discussions, we're budgeting for next year, it was decided to add the Predpol in because that came in late about a year, and this year, you know, late, I mean, it was just, it's still in the process of being signed off on, uh, the contracts and stuff. So that, the fifteen thousand for next year, throw it over again, throw it, throw it back. So that might be a typo, that might be a typo. Was originally, it did go down, and then it, it went up because of Predpol being added late.
I, I don't have the date as to, uh, my figure here, but I can tell you that some of these items, uh, as we, as we look deeper into them, were transferred over under a different account. More, more in line with, um, IT as, as far as, uh, being more specific and trying to be, uh, trying to put the.
I think you could get a follow-up on that.
Yeah.
Because it, I mean, that.
What exactly would you like to know?
The equipment, uh, you know, so it's, it's kind of all over the place.
History.
Twenty-fourteen, seventy-seven thousand, twenty-fifteen, original budget, fifty-six, eight, sixty-two. Then our revised, what we're seeing is the seventy-five number that Laura mentioned. The actual is at fifty-two thousand right now, twenty-fifteen projection is at ninety-five thousand, and then the twenty-sixteen budget is at fifty-seven thousand again. So it's really unclear what the trend is, you know, what the reason for the changes are. So if something has been shifted out of that account into somewhere else that was accounted for in twenty-fifteen, that'd be, it'd be helpful to know where that went.
Clearly. The, the reason sometimes that account is adjusted is because some of the, uh, contracts, like, for instance, the telephone maintenance contract, is they only due every seventy years. Um, so there might be a spike one year, uh, because of maintenance contracts being due. And, uh, another example might be the, uh.
Well, we just had our teletype, um, our, our radio communications FCC number that's due.
Yeah, there, there, there may be some, things are, I guess what I'm trying to say is some things are due every X number of years. And there, there was a spike a few years ago because there were several, like, web filters, spam filter, I think, I think that was, they were all kind of due roughly the same time, so.
Okay.
Um, maybe, maybe seeing that history over time and, and any, like, said, any things that have been shifted out of there. Just some kind of explanation, because it just doesn't make sense to me.
Can't you show the history on there? Can you replace with general history?
I think it, I think it would help if we had just the year and the major items that caused that switch.
Okay.
And that would be enough to Jen, then, then we could see any impact of what that was.
Okay.
If it's a, if it's a license, X number of dollars in the licensing.
Okay.
That'd be the easiest way.
Yeah, I think.
Shouldn't take a lot of time.
Keith is trying to drill down on it now, but he's not gonna get, I don't think you're gonna get.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't slow down, that, that's not gonna help.
We understand.
Um, the next line, the five thirty-four, three oh eight vehicles. That it's, the comments are about the aging vehicles and, and the additional funding in there. But again, it looks like it's reduced. Is that because of our, our new vehicles, the number of new vehicles we have, and comments are left over, maybe?
Well.
Or do we actually need one more?
Right. This, this particular line, um, we had asked for, uh, seven, and we're operating, we're now, our budget is now showing five. So that's one of the reasons that it was reduced. Additionally, when you look at past years, too, there was a, a larger push because of the condition that most of the vehicles were in in two thousand and ten and eleven. There were higher purchases because we were purchasing more vehicles at that time.
Okay, is this vehicle purchases or vehicle maintenance?
Vehicle purchase.
Maintenance, but.
Vehicle purchase and the equipment, the equipment for those new vehicles comes out of the same line now. Vehicle maintenance is in a separate line.
But that's further down. That's in the capital line.
You're, you're looking at fifty-seven, seven, zero, twenty-five, right?
No, I'm looking at thirty-three, four, three oh eight.
On page.
Page twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Middle of the page. And it says vehicles, but it looks like vehicle maintenance.
Vehicle maintenance, fifty, fifty-three, forty-three, oh eight.
Yes.
Seventy-six thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
We couldn't budget for more than that because of the, uh, the restraints of having to stay within the, um, what was the flat budget, that's bottom line.
Oh, I know, yeah, I, I noticed. I went by, I never really looked at the cars you had parked in the extra parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
The windows are all gone.
Mm-hmm. Those are slated for auction, those are slated for surplus, we've already surplus those, sure the process?
The windows were there when we parked them there.
They were there.
They were there, I thought, I figured that. But they're, all the windows are gone, it's about, how many cars, about seven in there?
Six.
Six. That's all those cars are.
Rich lot is.
We're talking vandalism.
The gravel lot.
Vandalism, yeah.
They get vandalism in the gravel lot.
Yes.
And we have, uh, cameras on those already?
Not on that side.
I mean, I mean, I saw the plants, I said, my God, we had these windows. I haven't been paying it no mind, but I just happened to look up so you'll see it.
We had a.
So I thought we were gonna replace all those cars.
Well, we had a few, they, well, they're slated for surplus, but in fact, I think they have been.
Yeah.
So, how many in there, six, you say?
Six.
And you wanted five. Well, they got six that's not running. So you can't give them this, the cars, you look at those cars. Because you want it, you want it seven, and you get five.
Right, well, we're, we're still, we're still getting the ones that you approved last year, they're still on their way to us. Presumably, once again, through Australia.
Where?
Literally.
To where?
Australia.
Australia?
Mm-hmm. That's where, that's where they're being manufactured.
Ganfostis, that's right.
Oh, gee.
Down under.
That's right.
Oh, God.
All right, so this was, um, you know what the original requested amount was?
Hundred twenty thousand.
Of course, they have the kangaroo, but they're.
Before we started getting at the rotating, some of the, in the last three years, two, three years, actually, our maintenance, uh, budget was heading around, the highest we hit was about a hundred eighty-five thousand, a hundred eighty-nine. We were able to reduce that through the influx of the new vehicles, but it's gonna require about a hundred twenty thousand to maintain this year.
Yeah, and that's, that's consistent with twenty-fourteen, and the tar, what it looks like we're on target for, for twenty-fifteen. I think that's accurate.
We weren't able to request anymore because of, we just couldn't cut from another, any other account.
Right, I understand, and, and that, that's why I'm asking these questions, is where are we? Where do we not have money that we should have money? That's my approach with this, the, do we have what we need here? All right, so that one. Wait, there's not. Let me go down to the next page. Operating. This one was.
Which one?
Uh, page twenty-four, it's, uh, five forty-six, zero, zero, six. I think that's a six anyway. I don't know what's going on, I think this has to do with the, the expired POs, a negative number out there for the twenty-fourteen actual. So I don't know what we actually spent, but the actual for twenty-fifteen is fifteen thousand, and it says mere level reduction of fourteen thousand dollars down to twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
How is that?
Twenty-eight forty-five.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna tell you that it's, they're gonna tell you that it's not gonna work, and we're gonna tell you that there's only so much money to go around, so, um, not sure how we get past that, uh.
What's with the twenty-fourteen actual?
I think that's probably expired POs, I think Keith's trying to look at.
Yeah.
Some of those, once we cleaned up, would have left a, it's the only thing I could think of, maybe it'll look like that.
Uh, it's an inventory adjustment, and that's where the, uh, the inventory adjustment hits.
Okay.
Just books to actual. The end of fourteen.
So we had more on hand than we thought we did?
That year.
That year, but. Right, right. What was the actual expenditure that year?
Without that, thirty, if you take that, uh, add thirty-seven back.
Okay, so about, about on track. I just don't see how that happens. Could you put that on the revisit list, please, as well?
On that line, do I see batteries is in there, does that include batteries for your radios, et cetera, et cetera?
No.
Not in that line?
Just, we're talking double As and double As and whatnot, okay?
If I remember right, I think we're budgeted where we tried, we asked for eighteen, I think generally, we, we, I'd have to look at the history, but I think, uh, I think we, I think we always ask for a, a transfer into that account each year.
Were they in operating?
Yeah, in operating.
Yeah, you can see the last two years, in thirteen, there was twelve hundred transferred in, fourteen, twenty-six hundred, fifteen, five's been transferred in.
So I think we, we averaged about twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand.
So the original request was, uh, when was it, fourteen, sixteen, or fifteen?
Sixteen, eighteen. And I think that was another account that, because of the flat budget, we had to just decrease in certain areas, unfortunately. But I think we'll actually need around twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three thousand.
Need twenty-two. Thank you. Skip down a couple to the A N supply, I'm not sure what that is.
What number?
Five forty-six, zero, one, zero.
Animals.
Animal supply, okay. This one, I read in here that we were gonna try to get a second canine. Would that be grant-funded that would cover, because this one's already a little bit below what we have year-to-date for animal supplies.
Right.
So if we add another canine in there, I would expect that, to see that go up, not down.
Well, we have two canines right now. One is patrol and one is a drug narcotics dog. Narcotics dog was purchased through, uh, the, um, yeah, our, um, task force coalition that we're part of. Through the narcotics task force.
So the comments that I, I'm not sure where I saw it, but are we looking to add another dog this year? Another canine?
Uh, we would do that if, uh, Wintif had the funding for that.
All right. Now the vest, the equipment, main line, five forty-six, zero, one, two, it's two lines down from that one. Have a comment here, tactical bulletproof vest, eight thousand dollars. Is that accurate number for, per vest?
Per vest?
No.
No.
Or was that multiple vests?
Right.
Okay.
These, and these are the heavier.
The new ones.
The heavier pieces.
Right, because that was reduced, and then we moved it to, or reduced to zero, because we moved it to the next page under the protective vests. So how much are the actual vests?
They're about five hundred and fifty to five hundred and seventy-five dollars. I think there's an increase that's going through right now, it's about five hundred and seventy-five dollars a piece. That's for the.
Heavy.
Level two vests that the officers wear. The heavier vests are about eighteen hundred a piece.
So starting out with fifteen, or is it, uh?
Need to buy fifteen, it says.
And then every year after that?
Every, every year, we rotate. Because they have a five-year life expectancy, the vests, uh, this is the level two, this is what you see the officers on the street wearing.
Right.
Um, about every five years, they have to be rotated. The level three vests, which is what our tactical unit wears to, for search warrants and so forth. Level threes cost about eighteen hundred dollars a piece. Every so often, they also have a life expectancy, also, we are in need of several of those vests this year.
So which ones of those do we have to, how many of each do we have to replace this year?
I think the, uh, level threes, I think the tact team is asking for eleven. But I think I have some, I'm working on some grant funding to obtain some of those vests.
How are those disposed at once they've reached their life expectancy?
I don't believe we have, um, disposed of any of them as of yet. So they usually sit back in the quartermaster's office because we, uh, don't really have a mechanism in place to put those back out. And, uh, there's a liability there if you.
Technically, they're no, no longer, but.
Right, there's a liability there to, um, release them in some other fashion other than destruction, and.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't. Right, there's a liability there to, um, release them in some other fashion other than destruction, and, um, we haven't.
How about the five hundred and fifty dollar vests?
Again, we, we keep those as well.
We usually try to replace, we're on a schedule to replace about fourteen to fifteen a year. But now, this, this particular account, account represents fifty percent, cause we have a federal and state grant, provided it's renewed each year, that pays for the other fifty percent. So of that five fifty or five seventy, the city, uh, the city actual costs is just half of that. Unless we run out of grant funding and we need the vests, and then we have to, you know, front the hole. We usually try to ask for about this, about the amount that we'll be getting in grant funding.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'm almost on this one. Compro, it's on page twenty-seven, five sixty-nine, two hundred. Special request for community project, thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's popular filled pre-release?
Oh, okay. I'm not sure what that was. And could we get, in years past, we've gotten the schedule of vehicle replacement to kind of know years' knowledge and all that, we could get a copy of that, though.
Absolutely.
Great. Now I'm down in the, on page thirty-three, it's switched over to traffic control.
Traffic control?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not you. I'm sorry, never mind. The one other question that I had was on postage, and this is a minor one. Are we still sending letters when there's, uh, like, we've replied to a party violation, something like that, to the prosecutor? Okay. That's all I have.
Any other question, I have, um, one more to change. Since, um, and I don't know where it, uh, I had mentioned, um, earlier on, I think I called, um, or texted mayor to put in the budget, I don't know if it come in the community pro, promotions, or from the police, um, to add a thousand dollars, I'm gonna work, to, um, project, uh, be followed through the police department for better community relation with the, the youth, where would that come in under? Cause we talked about how we build a relationship, the community prom, promotions?
Well, if it would be managed by the police.
It'll be managed by the police department, where they can take the kids to game, a game, you know, that kind of stuff. It should be on the police, remember I was talking about that?
Yeah, we've got some good breaks to do.
You have some funding for first?
No, no, I asked funding from the city, I asked a thousand.
Being in community promotion.
And I don't know if it's in community promotion, but, but I, just so I happened to see the community project made my mind trigger.
No.
And I, I suggested at least a thousand dollars to, like, take the kids to a game, like Shorebird game or something like that.
Two buck Mondays?
Happy, happy. Say what?
Two, two dollar Mondays on, to the game.
I'm talking Shorebird, I'm talking out of town.
Oh, okay, two buck.
Like Oklahoma Oriole game or something.
Oh, I see.
And, and, and where to build a relationship between the police and, and.
Do you want us to add it as a possible adjustment?
Yeah, and I want to make sure that gets in there, at least a thousand.
Consideration.
Uh, what line was that, community promotions?
I don't know what word it'd be, that's why I'm asking.
It might ultimately end up there, yeah, it doesn't have a, right.
But we wanted it to be fumbled through your department.
So I'll leave it as a decision that the council's gonna make.
I've got a decision on that.
Okay.
Oh, we'll leave that out.
Or then there's a possibility.
Well, the mayor, the mayor agreed to it, so I don't know if he's changed his mind.
I guess my only other question is, loaded blanket question, is there anything else that isn't in here that we're not seeing that we should? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm seeing things that we.
We're good, actually, we're.
They give cards made in America.
Well, I mean, they are made, you know, they're, they're American-made cards, they're just contracted out in Australia.
Still wanna go out here by four o'clock.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't care. I thought we were gonna see the original requested information this year, and I don't, I haven't found that, so, I have to ask.
Well, uh, one of the, uh, one of the issues that we always struggle with, you know, is, is the overtime. And that's gonna be a problem moving into this next fiscal cycle. But in order to comply, you know, with the level budget message, level funding message, and, um, still get all the things in, we have to reduce that.
The, uh, non-clerical overtime?
That would be for sworn, yes.
What, what line is that?
Well, because even if, even if we are able to reduce the dependence on overtime to do special patrols and things like that, if, um, through the hiring of more officers, through the creation of more positions, there will always be a need for special events, court time, you know, any, any of those things where it's going to require overtime, so.
Right.
I guess, I guess the, the goal would be to move toward that figure ultimately, and ensure that we're, you know, the, the correct staffing to allow that to happen. I don't know that we're there yet.
Yes, I had it highlighted, and it had the mayor level reduction for the, um, to offset chief reclass, and you, you kind of explained what those reclassifications were, so I, I didn't really say much, but FY fourteen was four hundred, over four hundred thousand, and, uh, projected for this year is three hundred, but we're just about at that. I did wanna ask, though, how is it going with the coordination with the courts? And not having the officers there, is that, that's working out? That's a lot.
What happens with that is that, uh, when a case first comes over, attorneys review it, uh, and they may call, they may end up calling all of the officers involved in that case, but then as it, uh, gets closer to trial date, they usually wave off, they call the officers up and, and don't have them respond in, so that's actually working quite well. You're not seeing large decreases in that, but it's, it's, every little penny counts.
Right, right, and then, well, and the big decrease, I think, was from, I think we start, you started working on that at eleven or twelve, probably FY twelve, thirteen, so we probably already saw the biggest bang for that.
In that particular section, yes.
Right, for, for, from that, those efforts, yeah.
Right.
So we've realized all the savings we're gonna see out of that, basically.
But we're still doing our fifty thousand calls for service per year, and the state's attorney's office in total is still prosecuting about five thousand cases per year, so it's, it's there.
Right, but I'm saying, they're, they're working with us as much as they can, we can't get it, we can't squeeze any more out of that. What was the requested amount for the overtime?
Four hundred and twenty.
I think it was four twenty. You might need that later, you might need that later.
Our history has definitely trended upwards, starting with two thousand and five, uh, to present day. There's been a several hundred thousand dollar increase over that time period.
Is any of that offset by, I mean, I know some of it's created by the shortages at the unfilled positions.
Some.
Some of it can be offset by that as well, but when you fill those positions, you're still gonna have overtime.
Well, you know, you might actually, um, and, if memory serves me correctly, I think we went over this, um, during the, where we were discussing the additional officers, you might initially actually see an increase in overtime expenditure, because you've got all, all this additional personnel, and they're all, you know, making arrests and going to courts, but that will level off, once they're in the proper place to, you know, prevent the crime from happening in the first place. You're not gonna see the expenses associated with the investigation of, say, an assault, which could cost us up to fifteen hundred dollars just to investigate that one crime. Uh, if there's an arrest, if there's overtime associated with court costs or, uh, holdovers to fully investigate it or bringing in additional manpower. So each crime really has a cost associated with it, has a man-hour application to it.
Sure.
We understood the need, but we were hoping that the police department could do their best to work within the confines of the three hundred thousand dollars that is budgeted, understanding that some of the, um, variables might be bringing on new staff, that sort of thing, and then the, um, cooperation with the state's attorney's office, that we could work within the three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar range, and if we needed to revisit it later in the year, we could.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that we understand the need to, when we're making informed decisions about those trade-offs.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question.
Yes, just a clarification and a request possibly. When, uh, going back to workers' compensation, which is a huge number, um, two, in two thousand and fourteen, the actual shows two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in this department. I'm trying to look at the bigger, bigger picture, but just as an example, in this department, would that include the refund or the increase from the pre, that's calculated during the year? Would that be a net number?
It's a net number at the end.
Okay.
So it wasn't.
And then the, in the, uh, in the revised budget for two thousand and fifteen, does that number include an assumed refund?
The revised budget for fifteen did, it was the, was, had been reduced. Yeah, before it got adopted, it got reduced, and then, so the original budget included, included the, uh, the reduced, I mean.
Okay. And the five nineteen, it's in there for two thousand and sixteen, is it?
Yes. That'll get adjusted.
That's, 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 that's good, that's, that's, that's before the adjustment.
Okay, that's clear. It would be possible to get one, one analysis, not just by, for this department, but for workers' compensation, I'd like to see the history for the last five years of the adjustment, the final adjustment, just that number, for going back five years. To see what, that would, that, that would give us two different things, but I'd like to see that number for the city, not for, not by department.
Yeah, cause a year before it was like, close to a million dollars, or a couple, several years ago, it was close to a million dollars, last year it was four hundred.
Yeah. Is that something we can pull again?
Yeah, there's, there's two, two adjustments, one is to the budget.
Yeah.
And then secondly, even at the end of the year, we get a, we get an audit, and then we get an audit adjustment.
Right.
So you, you talking about the budget adjustment?
Budget adjustment.
Okay, yeah.
And, and the same thing, I would assume, happens for part of the county's health system, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yes.
The same thing happens with the health, since we're semi-self-insured, correct? We get a.
Settlement.
Can, a settlement. Can you give me the settlement numbers for workers' compensation and health insurance?
Sure.
Thank you.
We hope to get a settlement.
Yeah, we, in our favor.
Yeah, right.
Pay up. Um, that reminds me, when we were rolling through this city clerk, and I think mayor's office, we saw a reduction in health insurance, and you said that went down, but I think, that must have been only for that department, cause I've seen the others go up, maybe changing plan or something like that.
Yeah, but it hasn't been a plan change, cause the health, the health rate, uh, health, uh, constant. All three new rates, yeah.
Okay, so any increases for additional personnel or change of plans?
Change, change, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask a question about animal control officers and their uniforms. Um, do you, I see if they're reimbursed perhaps for, at three hundred and twenty dollars per year, this is for uniforms, equipment, and purchase of shoes. Do you have any specific amount that you dedicate to our shoes, in a given year, or is it just a general?
No, it's a general amount that we're giving.
Cause I'd like to see each one of these guys have at least two pairs of shoes that they can wear during a year, you know, as opposed to one pair every day, all the time.
That's what we did a couple of years ago, was noted in most of the, most of the.
Yeah, public works.
We did it with public works.
So to be clear, you want me to revise the uniform allowance to include purchase of two?
I think we have a, a uniform line, I think, a, a uniform line.
Yeah, there is, six hundred, six.
Page thirty-one.
So.
Six hundred and forty dollars.
I don't think you would, I don't think you would do a uniform allowance line, I think we're just gonna do a uniform line, I think they, they're gonna use money there to pay for that.
Out of the police uniform line?
Yeah. Well, they have their, they have their own line, under two one oh two nine.
Uniform purchases.
And we do, for what, for public works, it's, it's close to two hundred dollars, isn't it?
Two hundred, I'm sorry, yes, two hundred dollars per pair, I mean, per year.
Per year, right.
Per employee.
Why do you need two pair of shoes?
Uh, because when I work in a day sweating in one pair of shoes, you shouldn't step into the same pair of shoes that.
Yeah, cause you feel wet.
Was it possible to wear only two pair of shoes, two, this year?
Yeah, it's every year.
They have been.
We did that every year, or four years ago.
They encourage them to get two pairs, it's up to them to, you know, spend the two hundred dollars while.
But it's a reimbursement, it's not, they don't get a check.
No, no, you know, not anymore.
But you get a real nice pair of work boots, please, for a hundred bucks.
But some of them, yeah, they're swagging around and who knows what, and, and you die out before you put them back on.
Yeah, and it, you know, it keeps, it doubles the wear of the shoe as well. And I would say the same thing for the, for the animal control guys, those guys are on their feet pretty much the entire time.
Just two, just two. I'm gonna have to end the animal control, sorry, I did have one more, but it wasn't really for chief.
I, I need a clarification on that. Are you talking two pair of shoes for each police officer, or we just?
Yep.
I'm just talking about, at this point, you know, if we could do the same thing we do for public works, that would be great. You know, dedicate two hundred dollars a year.
What happens if it's a police officer?
I guess for about a pair a year.
Depends on the assignment, somewhere, whether tennis shoes for the bike patrol.
Bike patrol.
They're about a hundred dollars a pair. Then you have the, uh, canine where the traditionally the boots, and, uh, tactical team wear the boots for their tactical operations, and patrol usually wear one quarter.
We go through the, and this is more requests for a follow-up for our annual machination with the community society and contract status on that. Exactly.
Let's get busy with that puppy, shall we?
Still one thunder.
But I think it's gonna be a closed session.
Well, it's actually on, yeah, I mean, the contract may be closed session, but it's on pending, uh, pending.
Yeah, I was just having an interest.
We're working with purchasing to put an R F P out on, on that, so.
Okay.
And once we get a handle on.
Which is actually huge progress, I mean, the fact that we're getting to the point where we have, where we know that, where we have some reasonable expectation that there can be a response from anyone other than the community society.
Yeah.
It's progress, it's more progress.
And once we get that information, I can finalize my draft of the new animal control ordinance, so we'll get that before this. Just cleaning it up pretty much. Anything else in there that don't even exist anymore?
Can I, can I just get some clarification? I have, um, three different lines that I owe you some additional information on. Uh, one of them is our equipment line.
Yes.
The second one is our operating supplies line, the next one is our vehicle maintenance schedule, and then the two pair of shoes for our animal control officers, is there, I think I tracked everything?
Yeah, cause I think Keith will have the workers' comp and stuff.
The working comp and, uh, working comp, Keith will handle that.
And the health insurance.
So yes, I think that covers it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
And those would be working shoes, we don't want them to see any patent letters.
Thank you, Colonel.
I don't think the animal control guys are gonna go out. You don't look like you follow the instructions.
Yeah, I didn't mean to.
I know.
This is what, kinda looked like the first time, too.
Okay, it's reaction.
It's like, fell asleep.
Thank you, Mr. President, and counsel, it's a pleasure to be here this morning, or this afternoon, now, it seems like all morning, for shame, it was all morning. For shame, it was all morning.
Some people just can't follow.
Just grateful, just thankful to be here. With council approval, I'd like to accomplish my presentation in two, in two different things. One, go through the, the proposed budget and just discuss the changes that we have requested, and the mayor has implemented in his budget, and then entertain council questions as it relates to the budget. And then, because the, because the mayor has, the mayor's been very gracious in allowing me to make an additional presentation to the council, my final comments will be based on a presentation. We will present to council on one of the initiatives that the fire department has, has been trying to put forth for a number of years now, and we're, we're finally able to, with, with, again, with the, with the grace of the mayor to present to council, and we're, we're very excited about the opportunity to do that. So is that okay with you, Mr. President?
Yes.
All right, so if we'll just go through the budget, there were very few increases and decreases in the fire department's budget this year, and with, with council approval, I'll go through them line by line. I will not venture into the personnel services accounts, since most of those accounts, with the exception of the overtime budget and part-time lines, were controlled by finance at this point. We have not asked for an increase in our overtime line nor our part-time line. We, based on our projections, we look like we were going to be okay. I will tell you, since we've submitted our budget, our part-time line is exhausted, 100% exhausted, and our, and we are crashing into our projected surplus in our overtime line. So we are going to be very close to the end of the year, and we'll manage it to the best, at the best of our ability to get to that, to get to that end goal of being the end of the year. But there was, we, we asked for no increase, because at the time we presented the budget, we were in very good shape. So we'll move down to the general operating lines, beginning with our medical line, which is 513040. We had requested a very small increase of $2,250 to that, based on the addition of the four positions that we had increased in FY15, mid-year FY15. Landscaping and ground maintenance, which is 523604. Again, another small increase as it relates to this expense account of $2,015. The reason for the increase is that our vendors, since the economic turn-down, our vendors had been doing their very best to hold level pricing over those, over those stressful times, and this is year four, and they're not willing to hold their prices anymore. So we went out and we, we required bids for landscaping services, and the lowest, the lowest bid that we had received was 6915. So it required this increase of $2,000, $2,015, just based on what we had received quotes on from the vendor.
Who is that vendor?
Truvine.
Truvine?
It's been, they've been the vendor that has been holding their prices for the last four years, and they, they still came in as a low price. The next, the next increase was to our janitorial services account, in the amount of $2,708. Again, based on the same, the same thing, where they had been holding their prices and, over several years, and they just simply said they could not continue to hold the price. So there's a very marginal increase in providing janitorial services to clean the facility.
Well, they're seeing minimum wage increases, too, so.
Correct, correct. And I, and I, we're really appreciative that our vendors have worked with us over these many years, these few years that we let hold the prices, because of the economic conditions that we face. Size will increase to our billings account. Council will, I'm sorry, that is account number 534301. A $15,000 increase requested. Council may recall that, we'll, we'll look into history and see that in FY15, our actual is much higher than what our original was, and that is because we had to make some internal budget transfers to pay for a catastrophic failure of our air conditioning system in Fire Station 16 and Fire Headquarters. We, we had realized, after, after the fact, we had realized that because of the reductions in our budget since 2008, in our general operating accounts, we had made several reductions to our budget because of the economic turn-down. One of the losses that we had not rec, that I had not recognized, that had occurred over that time, was we had stopped paying for our service maintenance contracts for our HVAC systems. And because we had not done that, we realized, we, we feel that that was the probable cause for the failure of our HVAC system. So this $15,000 increase is to rectify that, so that moving forward, we, we do a preventive maintenance contract with our vendors, and make sure that our, our equipment is maintained in peak operating order.
And that $15,000 is for a year's worth of preventive.
It is, it is. It's, it's both for, it's for a preventive maintenance contract, as well as a computer monitoring contract, where they access remotely our HVAC system and can make adjustments, and, and sometimes they can service it just from their current location without making a call.
I'm sorry. Is that $5,000 a building?
No, it's $15,000 for the entire, for the entire Fire Station 16 and Fire Headquarters building.
Okay. So only for?
Station 16.
Station 16.
Yeah. Now, let me, let me, let me go to the subject matter expert for a second. Chief, does that include stations one, station one? In the, in the, in the air conditioning insert, so it includes station one. We will, we have not included station two because of its life expectancy.
It's coming down.
Its life expectancy. So, but, but we will, we will, we will more than likely have an increase in FY6, 17 to realize that station two's monitoring as well.
Well, it should be on the warranty for a couple of years.
It will, it will be.
A few years, though.
And then the only, there are two very other increases. We'll turn to account number 546023, which is fire prevention supplies. It is an increase due to our additional efforts in fire prevention activities, displays, neighborhood saturations, efforts, et cetera. Because we have been actively engaged in neighborhood saturation efforts, that we, we're so excited about, as well as our increased efforts in our after-the-fire program and our fire prevention activities, we have, we're buying smoke detectors and batteries and other fire prevention safety equipment and supplies to give to our citizens. And, and that, that increase is very nominal, based on, we've held that $5,000 number for, for many, many, many years, and we've asked for a slight increase there, because we've increased our activities in fire prevention.
Can we just do, I'm sorry, can we just do smoke detectors, or do we do carbon and CO2?
We do not do CO, CO.
Or CO.
We don't do CO.
I bet CO as well, but CO2.
Okay, yeah, yeah, T-O-O. We do not do CO. We will do a check, but they're, they're very expensive, and, and it's really, it's really cost prohibitive for us to be in that business.
I thought I'd also grant some.
The combination ones are just as expensive, they're just, they're just.
Really?
Yeah. So what we're doing is we're purchasing up-to-date, in-code, smoke detector to the ten-year shelf life, which is what they're expected to live, and then we'll replace batteries as well.
We did have several years ago, an in-kind donation of fire.
We still do. We still do. The state fire marshal's office manages a grant opportunity through various vendors, Lowe's, Home Depot. Primarily in our area, it's been Lowe's. I'm sorry, Dunbar Power has been very gracious in their, in their donations of smoke detectors across the state, and, and we have been the recipient of those. This is, the, it's, it's just not enough to get us through the year. So we have to, we have to purchase several.
I thought at some point Sepoa had given a bunch of smoke detectors to, to the fire department.
You know, that, that does come to my recollection, but I cannot remember what the details of the, but it does, it does come to my recollection.
Yeah.
Ace Hardware also made a, a fin, a contribution of smoke detectors and batteries to us to do one of our saturation efforts. So we've been, we've been marketing our mission, and several of our local vendors have been, been very kind and generous in providing those donations.
Good. Keep on sending.
We will, we will. And then the, the, the last increase to our operating accounts is in our telephone account, and that was simply based on a recommendation from finance, based on rating, I think it was a 4% possible rate increase over telephones. $570, so that was the 555401 account. Then the only other items that I'll, I'll address with council, I'm sorry, there are a few others. In electricity, natural gas, and gasoline, there are several, there are slight increases and one decrease in our gasoline account, based on, on our current use, our expected usage, as well as the decrease in gasoline and diesel fuel prices. The substantial increase in our new lease payments, that's prime, that is because of the, the increase of, a purchase of three brand-new ambulances, and the estimated lease payment is $999,333. Again, that's an estimate. We'll find out more as the real, true, and final cost of the units come in, and we find out what that lease payment schedule is. But it's important to understand that we also decreased our existing lease payments by $278,219.54. So, so we're actually to the positive in increasing and decreasing our lease payments in this particular case.
This might be a stretch of the grant purpose, but Heal Cities, I'll send you the email that we're a part of, has a grant opportunity for up to $9,000 for community wellness, and that, we might be able to find a way of, kind of.
Tweak payments?
Heal.
Heal.
Heal, H-E-A-L.
Cities.
Cities.
I would expect our grant application to have something to do with healthy food. That's not.
No, I was thinking the community gardens, but they had some smaller grants as well, so.
I'm not going.
Yeah. I mean, I'm much healthier than not being healthy. Sorry.
Other questions?
Chief, do we have, are all of our EMS units have a power lift?
They do not. The stretchers themselves are power lift stretchers.
All?
Yeah, yes. I'm correcting that, right? We have, we have, we purchased those a number of years ago. Our, our, our desire is when we spec out our new ambulances to have the, you may be aware of the new power lift systems, where it actually lifts the pa, it lifts everything for you. There is no lifting by our providers. Now, that's about a 13, $13,000 upgrade, but if, as we look, as we look at the exposure to our, and our injury, and our injury statistics, over back injuries and twisting and, and shoving injuries, that, that really is, that really is cost preventative for us.
And when you do that, we check with the compensation carrier, because that is one of those things that, you know, it's like when you put smoke detectors. That's one, that's a high one, in terms of our liability.
That's our, that's our goal.
Good.
So, so long as, so long as we can purchase or specify the, the unit, and it comes in under budget, we're, we're definitely going to do that.
You no longer use pagers, do you?
We do, we do use pagers. We, we, as a matter of fact, mine is over there on my little briefcase, turned off, so it wouldn't interrupt us. But we, we do use Fire Department pagers, for sure, to alert our volunteers, as well as some of our, some of us antiquated people that want to get alerted after hours, maybe.
And that's still costing back your money?
It is, it is. It's a, you know, a pager is $500, give or take a few dollars, and, and they have a pretty good life. My pager's probably eight to 10 years old, so.
See.
And it sure beats the sirens at the fire stations, alerting people.
That's what we still hear, though. Look, I don't know, not as much.
We're incrementally changing that. As each fire station gets replaced, they go away.
And cellphone notifications?
A little slow. It's, 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 yeah, these, the, the, the page, Fire Department pagers are real-time alerting as the tones that the central 911 sends out.
Right.
It opens up the pager and alerts us. The cellphone notification and pager notification is really dependent on communication center hitting an additional button. Sometimes they do it immediately, sometimes they do it, oh, I forgot to hit the button. And it's just not, it's just not, it's not a reliable system at this point.
Okay, but it's a, it's a.
It's a backup.
Personnel issue, not a, not an equipment, not that cell towers or relay is slower, it's remember, remembering.
Yeah, generally.
Okay.
It's like my voicemail system on my phone provider, it's like, you get the voicemail two days later.
Or text messages two days later. Like, yes, guess what, I'm sitting right here with you. One of those last night.
It is good for addresses, though.
Yes.
It is.
If you, when you're, that's, that's the one thing it's good for.
I, I like my pager.
Yeah, by the time you get to the firehouse.
I have a playback feature, so I push a button and it repeats what they said. So I, I hit it and it'll tell me, it'll repeat it, so that's an option as well, so.
Okay. Okay, I have questions. I feel like Radio Shack, or like I should be at Radio Shack, I guess, I have lots of questions. In the salary line for non-clerical, in the budget message in the other pretty document, it said there were six additional firefighters added, but I'm not sure that I'm seeing that in the financial numbers in that line, the 501002, sorry.
I think what the mayor was making reference to there were the two positions that were unfrozen and the four positions that were added.
In FY15.
Yes. In 15. But, but it's not, it's not added in '16.
Well, let me get to that page, sorry. On page five electronically, it's, it's got, oh, sorry, four new firefighters.
I think the mayor's just calling to people's attention that it's four over what was originally proposed in '15. So this will be the first year there were a full four.
So that's reflection and not a plan?
That's really more reflection, yeah.
Okay. All right, gosh, thank you. This is more for probably Tom or Keith, but I'm curious about the uniform allowances. I see it in a lot of different departments, but I see different amounts, and I see them, some are going up, some aren't, and I'm wondering if maybe we should look at what the uniform allowances and contracts are citywide, and see if we can't get a better deal by contracting with one company rather than each department doing it individually. And I was curious about the uniform allowance for PD versus FD.
Specific to? They're, they're pretty much, so far, it's decentralized as far as how that goes. They're all managing, the departments are managing what they feel they need.
Okay. I just saw where some of them were increasing, some weren't, and it seemed to be a lot of fluctuation.
If, if they, if they want more, they just, they put more in, then it gets evaluated at, in, in the sessions that we have, you know, the department sessions, to make sure everybody feels like they're okay, and then they're put through.
Yeah, not so much in buying them, but in the, in the maintenance, the cleaning of them.
Yeah.
Where they're, they're having them cleaned, I, I see a lot of difference there, and I'm, that's where I was thinking, if we had one cleaner that was doing them on contract, we might see some savings rather than each department just taking them to the dry cleaner or wherever.
It's, it's something we could certainly look into, and it may, some of the difference may be the, the type of soiling or whatever that's occurring, you know, Public Works versus PD.
And notwithstanding what the police department discussion was just a minute ago, that includes our shoe allowance as well. That, that's, it's all inclusive, so it's not just cleaning, it's the purchase of shoes.
Right, right. I was, that was just something that came to mind, that we might be able to find some savings there. And then that's not an urgent thing, but I wanted to mention it while we're in this. On your medical line, 513040, on page 35. 513040.
Yep.
You touched on that, and I see a mayor-level reduction of $17,000. It's an increase based on the addition of four new positions and the funds for pre-employment fit for duty, physicals and personnel. And this is when I was thinking there were four new positions being added, so is this a leftover comment, or what?
No. It is, it is, because the positions were added in mid-year '15, it was not budgeted in FY15 for those posi, those four positions to receive medical physicals. So the $2,250 increase that the department requested was for those additional people that had been added in '15. I'm not sure about the mayoral reduction you were referring to.
Yeah, it's got a comment at the bottom of that, says 17,000, maybe that should've been 1,700. What was the original request for that line, please?
What was the account?
513040. Medical, medical.
Oh, medical, okay. Requested 26.
So, it is 17,000.
I thought it was included.
The FY14 was almost 15,000, it's 14,600. The FY15 to date is 19,265, and it's been cut all the way down to nine.
You can see some history up there too.
Some of the, some of those are encumbered POs from year to year, carryover POs.
Nine thousand doesn't look sufficient.
Yeah, that number doesn't match what we have for 14.
It's 14, we have a actual of 14,622.
Original budget 23 revised.
Do you have any new someone on a reduction at that level? I don't recall.
It is when he was cutting.
Okay.
It is. It's not matching when he was cutting.
When, when he was working, okay.
Can you explain that?
We have 14 for the actual for 14, and it's got 26.
It's just a different timing of.
No, this is actual for 2014, not 15.
14,622, is that what you're seeing?
14,622, 34.
Yeah.
In the budget book, but up, up here it says the actual was 26,066, 68.
I don't have any good ideas right now. It all came out of the same, same software. Check on it.
Yeah, can you check on that and report back?
Could have, yeah. Could have been that maybe if one of them included commerces at the end of the year or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, at this point in time, I, I would think that budgeting on $1,000 is simply to be low. That would be something we need to correct. But if there's something we're not seeing.
Well, yeah, you can, you can rely on that. I'd say that 26, you can say that's real right there. That's the real number.
Nine thousand's not going to cut it.
Where's that nine thousand coming from?
That's what's in the budget right now.
That's what's in the budget.
Oh.
Nine thousand.
It was cut.
I must have a different version.
He might want to.
What's your name?
Mine is what was submitted to, is my submission, my request is.
Yeah, I see that it was 12, and then 26, and then 19, so.
20 seems closer, 20, 23, something like that, closer than 9,000.
It was $4,000, what was it in 13? 13. I'm looking for a big, a big, big, you can see the biggest line items was this $4,000 for physicals. Physicals back in 1713.
Are they required to have annual physicals?
Yes. Well, some, some are, depending on your age. If you're over 40, it's annual. If you're below 40, it's every other year or so. Every, every, that'd be every two years, right? Semi.
Sort of like the eye exam for your license every other time?
Semi, or I always get this mixed up. Semi. Every two years.
Well, at this point in time, I wouldn't show a number for, you know, for a change yet, but.
Definitely revisit, revisit list.
Other questions?
I think they're just. On the vehicles. And again, I think this is vehicle maintenance, 534-308.
534-308.
It's on page 36.
Vehicles?
Yes.
Your question?
The year to date and the actual are already about 20,000 higher than what we're, we have budgeted for 16. The year to date, I mean, the actual for 14 was 117,000, a little over. The actual for 15 is already at 118, estimated to be closer to 130, and we're budgeting 100,000. Is there something that's changed that's going to reduce that maintenance cost?
Keith, can you show me what the, I don't have what the mayor's proposal was.
What was the count again?
Vehicles account, which is.
534-308.
Bring that up on screen now. Yeah, it was cut by 20?
So, the request was 120, which was, is in line with the historic. What was your request?
Request was 120, which has been 120 for the last several years.
It has spent already 118, which should be 120. And 14 was.
We're expecting it to be 130 there in the projection.
Yeah. It should be 120. Yeah, the FY14 was.
Just, can I ask a general question?
Yes.
No.
There's no need. There are no generals here.
It's a current.
That's true. That's true.
After the, after the mayor's budget, after the mayor reviews the budget, I, I'm, no, I'll ask a question. Do the department heads get their budgets, his budget back to compare and see where the differences are?
All of the adjustments are shared, you know, with, with the departments.
And the department heads say yay or nay that they can adjust their budgets to fit?
There was some feedback on what, what, what international department heads on the adjustments. I said they were provided. Yeah, they were provided. But they don't, they don't, they don't say yes or no. I mean, there's no. There's no, no neither.
Thank you very much.
I want to, I want to stay on vehicles for one second. Can you categorize the costs that come into that maintenance line? What are we talking about?
It's, it's, it's all, it's all of the maintenance for all of our apparatus and including staff vehicles and apparatus. It's, it's all general repairs, preventive maintenance, DOT inspections, accident repairs. Pump testing coming in something else, okay? So, it's, it's, it's every repair to every piece of rolling stock we have.
So, both regular and?
Preventive maintenance.
And preventive and unforeseen?
Right.
Do deductibles fall in there too for insurance purposes?
Yeah, generally, what happens is we pay, we pay out of our budget, and then the insurance proceeds go into the city's general fund. And if I want to recover them, I have to come before council to ask for that to be reinstated, which there's, there's one coming your way in the next couple of weeks, just for that. Yeah, plug, plug.
So, that means you, that we add to what you, the 118 that you're coming to us for?
I think it would include that.
Actually reduce it, because the money would be going back into that line for the insurance proceeds.
It's, it's already come out of my budget.
Oh.
And, and, and I, I will, in order to finish the rest of the year.
You need to have it back.
I gotta have it back. That's why I don't.
Yeah, I, I think the other thing we have to remember is this doesn't go when we have, when there's a pumper problem or something, it doesn't go to grease monkey.
Right.
These are specialized pieces of equipment that has to be serviced by certified people.
Our department.
So.
And this year.
You can't, apples like, you can't compare these to.
We don't have to go to Jeffy Lou.
Another, yeah.
In, in an attempt to, to control cost, this year Chief Scott and his staff, we, we went to procurement, worked with procurement, went out to bid for a service contract where we asked for various vendors to come by and give us their very best rates for repair and service. And so, we have, we've really honed in on what the number is and done the due diligence, trying to go out and make sure we're getting the very best bang for the buck, if you will.
And the number came at 120.
Yeah, and in the last couple of weeks, we've had several serious repairs that we're going to have to make, which are going to put us over our budget. So, we're going to, we'll, we'll talk about between now and the end of the year, I'm sure.
That should be revisited to 120. Revisit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Could you speak for a moment about the maintenance and inspection of the non-specialized vehicles?
Yes, we use local vendors for that. Help me Darren, who does our light duty? Clives over up on, on Route 13, does our oil changes and preventive maintenance repairs?
Good choice.
Yeah. He, he, he's, he's a type of local vendor that you really want to develop a relationship with, because every now and again, we'll get an invoice that says, thank you for your, for your business, and he writes it off.
He knows his stuff.
He treats us very well, financially and as a price of repairs.
Thank you, Clive.
There should be an advertisement on the side.
You see our vehicle sitting up there, it's like a billboard.
Yeah, two lines, they're right together on page 38. Travel and training, 555-503 and 504. Both of them have a comment that basically you're holding steady.
Yes.
But if you look at the budgeted number, it's not. There's a $4,000 reduction in travel and a $4,000 reduction in training in the end number. There's no comment that they would made at the mayor's level, but I'm guessing that's what I, because there wasn't one for the previous one either. So, and those seem, those numbers seem fairly consistent. And these, what goes in there is that that's required, training to maintain your.
It's, it's everything except for the paramedic, college stuff, that's optional, but it's how we've been recruiting and retaining paramedics is training from within. If that gets reduced, then we won't be able to, well, we'll, we'll do the best we can with what we have.
But you likely would have to cut the scholarship or the college reimbursement. I, I'll just say this, to that point, we just put a whole lot of money into the salary study and adjusting to that and adjusting salaries to work towards the retention effort. And to see $4,000 for little things like that, or $8,000 between the two lines, start to thwart that. I know it's going to come from somewhere. I know we don't have everything we need, we never will. But we have, have to think about where we take those things from. A mother, it's what it does to morale and our retention efforts. And the, the training, making sure that we have the mandatory training obviously comes first. And not all of that's offered here. A lot of it is travel. You have to go somewhere, ask for the training, am I correct?
Yes, some of it. Especially the leadership training.
So, maybe if we could put those on the revisit list as well, make it available to the mounts.
Chief, are there any, is there any revenue generated from the educational space at 60?
Generally, the, the short answer is no. Generally, that is a public space. We allow folks to use it as a public space. But most of the people that use it are not charging for their class either. So, we're, we're not allowing them to use it as a revenue generator and giving them free space. But generally speaking, it's a, we, we use it as a public space and give, and grant access as such.
From the community side, yeah.
Yeah, and, and from the professional side as well.
Okay, that, that was my question as well. If they're charging for the, for the course, then are you charging for the space?
Well, we, we don't have a mechanism in place to do that yet, but we also haven't had to face that problem yet, so.
Speaking of that, are we collecting for reports now?
As it relates to.
Insurance company requests for year run reports?
We are not charging as it relates to a routine matter of getting a fire report or an EMS report. However, we, as it relates to public information requests from, from lawyers' offices and, and other, except, except the patient or the homeowner, they get charged based on our Public Information Act request form.
What about insurance companies?
Insurance companies, they, they would fall under the Public, Public Information Act.
Because we put that line in there, I didn't even see it this time, but.
Generally, generally, we give, we give the patient and we give the homeowner, if it's a fire report, we give that to them for free. It's a couple of pages, it's not.
Okay. The last question I have is on the last line for equipment, 577-030. Doesn't have any history, so it's obviously a new line, but the comment says increase based on assessment and recommendation from IT department. Mayor level reduction 24,000, budgeting 12,000. So, IT thought you needed $36,000 worth of, I'm guessing, computers and.
24,000.
Well, if you add the 12 that's still in there and the 24 that was reduced, it's 36, correct? Or is it?
I, the, the mayor went to IT and IT presented several scenarios, different percentage cuts, and based on their priority and what they thought would give us the best, the best bang for the buck for the use of the money, recommended a new schedule for our computer, for computers, and that's how that, that cut occurred.
Like replacement schedule?
That's right, fun replacement schedule. And he came up with a, with a full bore, and then the mayor said, hey, what if, what if you had to go 20? What if you had to go 40% different scenarios? And so, it wasn't a cut across the board, it was cut by IT based on the.
Tweak the hard drive here, tweak the software there.
Exactly. Yeah, he evaluated and did the best he could with the money that was allocated to him.
We don't, we don't have servers that are on the verge of failing or running.
We did, we did last year. John, do we have anything this year? No, we did last year, but that was one of our critical item requests last year and got, got taken care of.
Where was that?
It was on budget.
It was on budget and we found money and.
Where was it charged to though? Because there's no history in this line.
It would have been our computer account.
So, it was another question that I have, that we have a, this is an equipment account.
I'm sorry, it came out of our buildings account because it's, because it was considered a server.
That's part of the page area.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, the server takes care of your.
No, 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 it was, when we, when we need, when we replaced it, we had to do a budget transfer. And it was wrapped up in the budget transfer with the HVAC repairs.
Oh, I see, okay. Before we start spending money out of that line and developing history, could we maybe think about making that a, putting a computer line in or something, so we know that's for computer versus fire equipment?
Yeah, sure. I mean, for us, easy. We have a computer line, but it's very minimal. It's $3,000 maybe. Or that was our request anyway.
The problem is when you start, sometimes you buy a computer and you put it in this line, sometimes you buy a computer and you put it in this line, so you can't see what you've spent over, over time, the history's not there. All right, thank you.
Any questions? Chief, do you want to make your additional presentation?
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. President. And if you don't mind, I will move up to the presentation board so that you're not having to turn your head back and forth like a tennis match to see, to see what's going on. I will be making a very brief presentation, and following my presentation, I'll turn the time over to Lieutenant Eric Kramer, who is, who is currently serving in our inspections division and is a subject matter expert in what we'll be presenting today. I'm grateful for the mayor for the opportunity to present to council on something that, that's very, very important to us, very important that we believe in public safety, and that's an initiative to create a fire prevention and code enforcement bureau within the Fire Department. I forgot to take the transitions out. It makes me angry. Simply put, this is not a new problem. This is a problem that is created as all over the United States as it relates to fire on a per capita basis. The United States is one of the worst of the industrialized world as it relates to fire, fire damages in, in, in totality in the United States. We, tens of thousands of people are injured, property losses reaches billions of dollars in insurance costs and. We, tens of thousands of people are injured, property losses reaches billions of dollars in insurance costs and property costs, uh, and, and to be quite honest with you, it's, it's something that we should be paying more attention to moving forward. So in, in our vision, we would like to, to tell it that in response, we believe our citizens are asking us to be in all risk and all hazards fire department, fire and EMS service, we believe they want and deserve those, that, to, to, to happen for them. In order to do so, we believe we have to transfer our current model, which is simply, uh, an inspector that does some plan reviews, we'll talk about the details of it here in a second, uh, into a fall service code, fire prevention code enforcement division, uh, that, that services the citizens' needs and our business owners' needs in a little bit. We believe that in doing so, it, it allows our, us to enhance our overall life safety for our citizens, as well as for our emergency services providers. So, a new fire prevention and code enforcement division will provide the following services, citizens, businesses, Salisbury, specifically in these three categories, fire and life safety plan reviews, they are currently being conducted, and we, we propose that we continue to conduct them, they're currently being done in two different ways, and we're gonna, we propose to streamline it into one, one specific way. The, the, the thing that is not currently happening, which is happening, which we want to happen, and I think that we really are in desperate need of, which we'll show you several examples of why we believe we're in need of, is the ongoing, uh, code enforcement inspections of our commercial occupancies, uh, in the city of Salisbury. And then we believe that we can, through these efforts, increase our public, uh, fire and life safety, uh, uh, education initiatives moving forward. We have a very good, we, we do a very good job right now of educating the public, we believe we can enhance that. Anybody recognize a three-legged stool?
I used to milk cows, yeah.
Yeah, what's, what's the significance of the design of the three-legged stool? Anybody wanna help me? Very strong.
What do you mean, Chief, John, you need all three or it's on the stand?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a very strong, in its design, it's very strong, and it's very stable, um, and, and it's so it, it, but however, if you lose a component, it doesn't work very well, does it? It collapses. This is, uh, this is simply, uh, the use is, is analogous to what the, uh, the true fire and life safety mission of any organized fire department is and should be, and it has several, several components. It has primarily what we all talk about is emergency services and response, but it also has in its, in its responsibility, fire prevention for code, public education, and, and the other stretchers that keep the legs from splaying out as you sit on it or bear weight on it. The importance of this is I wanted to make sure everybody knows, this is not something new, it's not something that Chief Hoppus invented as a new initiative that, uh, Salisbury fire department ought to be doing, it's something we should have been doing all along, and for whatever reason, over the history of our organization, have not organized our efforts to be included in, uh, that we include ourselves in fire prevention code enforcement. Questions?
Take that away from you.
Don't take it away from you, Sarah. Push it.
Yeah, I'll have you in the shot.
So, I'm gonna turn some time over to Lieutenant Kramer, he's gonna talk about where, where's our current situation, where are we today?
Darren? I, I know, see, uh, what the fire chief said, I appreciate the time to come up here and talk about this, um, I'm a certified fire protection specialist, I'm a certified plans examiner, I'm a inspector, this is near and dear to my heart, this is something, um, that I, I never understood why we, we don't do these things, um, but hopefully with your support, we'll start doing it. This is just a copy of the fire prevention code, at, at some point in time, um, the city was inclined to adopt the fire prevention code, and it's adopted by reference from the state of Maryland Fire Prevention Code, uh, we just never put the means in the code to enforce it. So we adopted the code and then that was it, we were just happy and we didn't do it. In the code that was adopted by the city, that's where we already have, um, the authority to do code enforcement, um, make code interpretations, do the plan reviews, issue permits, that's already in the code. The city is already authorized to do these things by adopting, um, the fire prevention code. Uh, the way we're doing it now is, um, it's not working as good as it could be. Code interpretation, I talked about, that's one of the things that we're empowered to do by the code, and we, and Bill Howland's office gets requests for fire code interpretation, we get requests, uh, for fire code interpretation, the county fire protection gets requests for fire code interpretation, the list goes on and on, neighborhood services and code compliance gets requests, the state fire marshal gets requests, and it's very confusing. I can't tell you how many times someone thinks they're calling the fire department and they wanna know, can I, can I burn my trash in the backyard? I say no, but, um, there's burning going on, so it's confusing, and maybe they wanna ask about sprinkler system, what's required for a sprinkler system, and I have to direct them somewhere else. You need to call, you know, you either need to call the building department, you might need to call the, uh, county fire protection, so it is, um, it, it's a stumbling block to get things done in the city. Even our new construction, we'll talk about that, um, and sometimes, something that we feel might be for us to interpret, we might not share that interpretation with maybe the folks in the county, or maybe even the folks in the building department, we're, we're pretty much online with, with the building department, but it, it creates problems, there's problems out there. And I'm gonna give you some examples, and this is a, this is, this is a very, there's a lot of very busy slides in here, like I said, it's very near and dear to my heart, I live for this stuff. This is a, this is a memo that went out from the county, um, fire protection office, in reference to sprinkler installations, fire sprinkler installations in the city of Salisbury. And what it did, it excluded Fruitland, Delmore, happened, everyone else has a waterwork system, uh, is not subject to this, and what it did was they, the, the fire protection division, I guess, had an opinion that our water system isn't as good as it could be, um, and, and this was, this was all born back ten, fifteen years ago, but it still remains today, in fact, the date on the memo is, is just a few months ago. So what they do, when we design a sprinkler system, we have to have a certain amount of pressure to make sure it works adequately, so we check fire hydrants, we open fire hydrants, we measure flows, a lot of magic that we're good at. However, we have to add, in the city of Salisbury, it'd be approved by the county, we have to add ten, we have to subtract ten PSI, so if I open up the hydrant, I get fifty pounds of pressure, I have to show forty pounds. What does that do? Ten pounds in a sprinkler system, take my word for it, is a huge deal, that's a lot. So what this does is it's ensuring almost every new installation in the city of Salisbury for a sprinkler system is gonna require a fire pump, and they're not cheap. So if I'm gonna build my widgets, if I decide I'm gonna build my widget factory, and I gotta put in a thirty-five or forty thousand dollar fire pump, I may just go to Fruitland, I may go to Delmore, where I don't have to put in a fire pump. Now, if, if you take the time to read the memo, we can see that there's some adjusted space for, for retrofitted systems, sprinkler systems, a sprinkler system, whether you install it in a building that you're building today, or install it in a building that you're building that was built thirty years ago, it's the same system. But for a retrofitted system, the county will adjust that number a little bit, they'll relax that ten PSI, um, how much of an adjustment? I don't know, who decides that? Your guess is as good as mine, and that's, I think we're all aware of the, the term selective enforcement, you know, it's, it's kind of a big deal, if I have to use the ten PSI rule, but Chief Hoppus doesn't. That's, that's, I won't get into what could happen on that. And just one example on this, um, we done two flow tests for fire station number two, both flow tests, um, show that it will support the sprinkler system, it's designed for that new building, however, when we deduct the ten PSI that the county requires, now, now, um, the city's gonna have to pay thirty-five thousand dollars for a fire pump that we didn't know we were gonna have to do. So I guess, like Chief Hoppus said a little while ago, we'll be seeing you soon, cause we're gonna have to buy thirty-five thousand dollar fire pump.
Hopefully you can understand why we have to do that, I, I didn't.
Well, this.
The ten PSI.
There was a time back in, in, when this was first created, now it's been updated with minimal changes, when this was created, maybe the water system wasn't what it is now, you guys have spent a lot of money on the water system, it's a good, I can tell you, it's a good system, it's a great system, it's, I, I fought fires all over the place, and I've, we got good pressure, we got good water, and we had an issue with, um, Purdue. And Purdue started filling tanks, the water pressure to go down the city, depending on what's going on at the hospital, when I was being engineered, I feel like correctly, the water system, is this ten PSI is antiquated, however, you can see from the date, this is, this is a few months ago.
Great, so if that had to be reviewed, who would we ask to review?
Lieutenant, can I, there are a few from there, Amanda, is there a reasonable concern for, um, comparing our water pressure to other neighboring municipalities?